Good afternoon. I'm waiting to answer from the Lexington League Women's Boarders and I thought it was a pleasure to be able to come in and participate in your candidates forum. I will run over the rules again just quickly so that we all remember that we have an uncontested race, as you know, for moderator, campaign moderator, so we'll hear from Alice Moore first briefly and then we'll go into the contested races. And on each of those, each candidate will have a one-minute statement. And when all of the candidates have made their one-minute statements, then we will entertain questions from the audience. I've read the instructions here. All right, so take apart two-minute statements for the contested candidates. When they have made those statements, then there will be questions from the audience. And the way I think we'll handle those is that I will just assign the questions in rotation. So if you rise with a question, presumably for all three candidates for this office or that office, it will be initially directed to the next candidate in rotation. But if another candidate has a particular comment to make on that question, they can briefly ask to be heard as well. But because you are fortunate in all these races, you have lots of candidates and we don't, we can't allow too much time, so everybody will be very ready to deploy. And John Hickey?
My wife's a slut.
All right, so I'll start. It's not so big. So I'll start with Mr. Hickey for your two-minute statement.
Sure, thank you for having me today. My name is John Hickey. I live at 82 Sexton Avenue with my wife and three other children. By way of background, I have a bachelor's degree in law degree at Suffolk University. I earned both my bachelor's degree and my law degree while working full-time. My work experience includes, to a heavy extent, the legislature as legislative aide. I then worked for the Boston Water and Sewer Commission and the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority for almost 15 years, mainly in the area of labor relations and workers' compensation and dealing with reasonable accommodation. From there, I went to work for private utility and today I'm the director of Labor Relations for Boston Water and Sewer Commission, which is a 6,000-strong employee unit, as many of you know, is allowed us. The trauma center in Brooklyn is a very complex place. 4,500 of our employees are in unions, we have contracts. Myself and the team that oversee are responsible for negotiating those contracts and administering them on a day-to-day basis. So I bring up my work experience partly because I deal a lot with interaction with people in conflict and managing conflict and ensuring that we're getting the best results for everybody. I also, for a period of time, was an adjunct faculty member in Suffolk University's Human Resources Program and I taught in the Resources Information Systems class and also the air compensation and benefits class. I'm currently one of the three appointees to the Dedham Westwood Water District from Westwood. I serve alongside three commissioners from the town of Dedham. I've been a volunteer at Westwood Hockey for three years. I coached the Bay State Flag Football and Kennedy Dodge Program. I'm coaching T-ball in the Dedham area. I'm running for selectmen because I believe that generations of Westwood presidents have stepped forward and made the right decisions, made hard decisions that are always the easiest decisions. I believe that my life experiences, my background, my education and my commitment to this town qualify me for the position and I'm here today to ask for your approval.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Phil Delay and I'm seeking the office of Selectmen Hall Street. I'd like to thank the League for having me see you today and for our opportunity. I've been a resident of Westwood for 35 years. My children attended Westwood schools and they participated in Irish activities during their school years. I was involved in Westwood sports, baseball, scouts in the past years. My wife was active in the Girl Scouts also with the Westwood Young Women's Club. Westwood's a great town. They have a great school system, five, at least five. I think the seniors send it as one to each other. By all accounts, though, we're a small residential town and I think we should keep our focus on the things that make Westwood a small-town environment, just like a village. I would work to keep control of the taxes and that the residents of Westwood do not get overburdened. I hope that the town government is as transparent as possible. I think that we're talking about community involvement and communication between the residents of Westwood, something that I believe is worked on now, but really is a little bit more work. So we don't get a lot of upset by possible projects coming down the road that they haven't been involved at an early stage. I'll do my best to ensure that the residents of Westwood are treated with respect and they have a voice in the future of Westwood. I ask for your support in holding every point six. Thank you.
All right, questions for the selectmen. This gentleman.
I have two questions for John Hickey. My name is Michael Pryor. Thank you for having me here and thank you for having this forum. John, I had a letter a little while ago and I called you. You said you were too busy and you said you called me back. And after a few days, I called you and you were too busy and you said you'd send me an email and you didn't send it. And after a few days, I sent you an email, which had a very important topic. I live on the Dover Terrace and it was a letter I sent you that I sent to PDW and the Conservation Commission and the powers and much of that is about having the town, the governing committees encourage the neighborhood, the neighborhood residents who had projects going on to work together, to collaborate so that even people who didn't see a hearing gets, and didn't know about it, and have projects sprung on them that will prove. And so I came here from you. So my first question is, why didn't you contact me? Why didn't you call me back? And the second part is, there's another topic which is very important to me.
Let him address your first question.
So I don't recall saying I were in time for it. The first time we spoke, I was driving. I tried to.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sorry.
Moderator. Maybe I can do it briefly. This gentleman made several attempts to contact Mr. Hickey and it was unsuccessful. So he was asking why Mr. Hickey hadn't contacted. And then, as I understand the focus of your question, sir, it's about projects that are going forward in neighborhoods, maybe we didn't have it noticed to the neighbors who find that they're in process when they weren't aware of it. Is that accurate?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
So the first question is, okay, so Michael, we did speak and at some point has sent some emails. If there's a missing email, I apologize. We have spoken. You have emailed me. I believe your matter involves kind of a private property issue, if I'm not mistaken. But if the question is about not getting back to you, I think we have spoken. I do want to be clear. I sent a letter to 2,200 homes in Westwood with my cellphone number and my email address. So I'm never afraid to talk to people or follow up with people. I've spoken to dozens of people. I've had six house parties. I've had people visit my home. I have visited people in town, Boston, to someone's turn they need. So I just don't want to give the false impression that I don't return calls. I'm happy to talk to you about your issue, Michael. I think that it's a private property matter at the end of the day. But again, I'll be here today. Happy to do it.
Well, I don't want to get into conversation about it, but there's another topic which I didn't want to.
What I'm going to do, sir, is go to other questions and then I'll come back to you when other people have their chance, okay? You'll get your second question.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions for the selectmen? This lady.
Hi, I'm Linda Walsh, Village Works Road. Since much of the conversation with the school committee was around consolidation and its fiscally driven, how does he feel about that?
Let's let Mr. Glass start with that one.
Well, as far as, yeah, a little bit of budget, yeah, to see if we have to spend. And consolidation in the school system. Years ago, I was in a Lexington town meeting, we went through this. We closed a lot of local community schools and built schools and consolidated the schools into different areas. At the time, I thought it was a mistake. I think our mistake for Westwood to do that, I think they have to really look at how we can be fiscally responsible and keep the community schools going. And I'm not sure exactly how I'll get that done. I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I have to speak from facts.
So for me, I think that, you know, I was involved quite a bit. I attended some school committee meetings and I've spoken a lot. I do think there are two variables. I think the variables that I see are the life of the buildings, right? All buildings at some point, you know, their useful life may come to an end or may need to be rehabilitated and they're declining at moments. So it's two variables that are going to intersect at some point or have intersect. So I don't know what the answer is. I think, you know, we all love the neighborhood schools and we need to mention against those variables. To me, I think the biggest piece, and I hope as a selectman to work with the school committee, and be part of the dialogue, I think that there are some good models that have happened in Westwood, especially around, we have community groups or working groups around the police station, around the fire station, and I think that might be a good model we can look to with school consolidation. So I think as we've all seen here today, this gentleman mentioned it, there are rail, I think it is emotional, and I think anything that's going to impact our children is emotional. You know, for me, on a personal level, my kids ride the bus Monday through Thursdays, some Fridays, my wife doesn't work on Fridays, and the kids really go to ride on their bikes to school on Fridays. It's just one of the things I think in a child is important. So this woman mentioned the distance the kids would travel. So I think that it's, it just involves a lot of dialogue. I don't know what the answer is. I do think that at the end of whatever process we come up with, I want to make sure that everybody says they have their voice heard.
Okay. Lady, you have another one?
Yeah, Mary Macy Phelps, 295 Platter Tree Street. Full disclosure, I'm chair of the Library Trustees. But a question that was asked of the trustee candidates, I'd like to ask of the selectmen candidates and expand upon it a bit. The question to the library trustee candidates was regarding ongoing presence of a branch library in Islington. And that's actually part of a larger discussion taking place because, as you know, the selectmen have convened an Islington Task Force to discuss and study possible options for larger development within Islington that may involve not just the Wentworth Hall, but the building that we're in and a couple of other properties as well. And I'd be interested in your current thoughts on that matter.
Mr. Glass. Including this building, the Islington project that we all see on the horizon, basically the sale of this building, and I thought a lot of it included in that. Actually, my wife, I've been working the neighborhood, we want to get as many people involved in the community as far as what is actually happening here. We have passing this literature around. We have well over 200 signatures because we want to keep the Islington, the New England Village look here, and we'd like to keep the library here. We'd like to have this community center still at Islington and we want to make sure that this whole package is kept together. It's nice to come to Islington, see the New England look and it's part of what I think Islington, Westwood is. It draws people to this area. So to make sure that the library stays here, I think it's a must. I think we have to make sure that it's financed and we don't sell off the library. And if this ends up getting sold, then we keep the movement somehow, or at least the our intention to keep it in the New England Village type frame.
Yeah, so great question. I hear what you're saying about the holistic view. And I think with the task on as part of a strategic plan is in the development of the fire station. The fire station is intentionally intended to serve those as a security resource, but also to see that this corner continues to look and feel like a corner. As far as keeping a library at Islington, I think it's important to do that. You know, we've talked a lot about we are a small town of 15,000 people, but geographically we're so diverse, right? So it's very difficult to get from one side to the other. So I think as part of any large-scale development, a library is great to have. It generates foot traffic along with just generating a place for children to go and families to go. So I would be in support of including it as part of a holistic holistic plan.
Another question, this gentleman over here.
Ken Fiskell, 35 North Clark Avenue. Part of our town government, a key part is our annual town meetings. We have two of them now. And for the past several years, through the Child Study Committee and the Bylaw Study Committee, they've looked at electronic voting. Several towns in Massachusetts have gone to it. And there's many benefits that they report on it. Two key benefits that I think there are, that people wouldn't be afraid to go to town meeting and stand up and be voted for fear of not being accepted by neighbors or people in that area who have a different opinion. And right now, we have trouble sometimes getting a quorum at town meeting, so that might improve the attendance at town meeting. I just wondered if you had thoughts on electronic voting.
Mr. Fiskell, I do, and unfortunately, they're quite different than yours.
So I will tell you that my father worked as a United Auto worker on the Hack Street in Oldwood for many years. He worked full-time and then he drove home and he took the bus on the Orange Line to South Station and worked for labor. He essentially worked two full-time jobs. My mother and father would vote come in, fire. My father never missed a vote on the day he was a citizen. So I get a little bit, a little bit, I struggle a little bit when people tell me they don't have time to vote. And I struggle a little bit with the notion of anonymity in voting and anonymity in participating in your government. And I'm a big believer, you know, when I studied government, in the notion of healthy tension, right? I wanted to be healthy and constructive. I know there was a talk earlier, you know, some of the meetings and the school committee and town government. There's always going to be elements of that, to make sure it's constructive, but I'm really, I'm a little bit hesitant to go down the path of electronic voting.
I feel the same.
Mr. Glass, your voice is speaking low.
See, I got a drink, it's okay. But I, I think, I'm a revolutionary war buff. Back in the old days, everybody in town knew everybody else and they voted and they got involved in town meeting. Everybody seemed to, if they disagreed, they disagreed. But it's, it's good to have everybody, at least visually, in front of other people and have the opportunity to, that everybody knows where everybody else stands and did not hide behind some computers someplace else. So that's all I have.
Other questions? This lady hasn't been called up yet.
Hi, June Sullivan, Howards Street.
Yeah, as loud as possible.
Honey?
As loud as possible.
Okay. I'm wondering how you can improve communication and transparency so that, you know, folks in the town know what's going on, because people work and they're busy and so forth.
Oh, let's start.
Okay, no, I'm happy to take the question. I, you know, I'm part of a subcommittee in the Sheen PTA right now, really on this issue. And how do we get people more engaged and how do we get them involved? And it seems that for a host of reasons, there's a lot of communication, there's a lot of writing, but we still hear, we didn't hear about, we didn't know about. One of the things that we're starting to find, and I'm, by no means I'm a technical or a 19 person, but when we study this a little bit, is that when people get an email and there's a click, you know, important information here and they click on it, they're a little more apt to read it, right? So we're trying to think about ways to do that. I do think, you know, part of the public records law in Massachusetts is not really caught up with technology, right? So all day long, we're inundated, we're at work, right? So many of us, myself included, work phone, a personal phone. My wife and I now exist off a Google Calendar, right? So part of it is, there's a lot of information that's inundated by law and we want to go above that, but also people are inundated all day long. And how are we getting those important topics and issues to them? I know the schools use like a Twitter account, right? So we gotta, do we need to start getting more people in town government and residents on Twitter? And so it's the electronic medium and making sure that our message stands out when people are involved. Because I think that there are a lot of important things going on and I don't, I don't like to hear I didn't know about it, right? So sometimes it's the fault of the deliverer and sometimes it's the delivery is overwhelmed by not seeing it. But I'm with you. I mean, I don't want to be part of a government where people feel it's a lack of transparency, you know, but it's a two-way street. So we've got to figure out from both sides how to make this available.
Recently, they had a meeting for the police project. Maybe you've seen this last Thursday was the meeting. I believe you probably got this last Thursday. The communication was there, but it wasn't timely. This works, but they liked all short. They were only, the meeting was at 7:30 at night. We'd get home sometimes, it was 6, 7 o'clock at night. So if they really wanted to attend this meeting, maybe we could adjust their schedules. So I don't know if everybody got this, but we did. It was kind of late. So something like this does work. I believe that we should have more communication like that. I know Town Hall does the global calls to let us know what's, what's going on. That works. Being online, I have a certain websites. That works in a lot of different ways. Word of mouth, if it gets something buzzing in the neighborhood, that spreads usually pretty well. And the problem is, is you want to have the right facts out there. I think a lot of times when it gets around the neighborhood, there's facts not there. So getting facts out to people, I think, is very, very important. And how do we do it? This is one way. Flyers maybe, but especially for a certain part of the communities being affected, we have to go into that community and let these people know way ahead of time before something happens. So there's not a misinformation out there.
Mr. Hickey, I wasn't sure if you mentioned, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if you mentioned if you had specific goals or priorities if you were elected.
Well, I mean, like I said, I've had, you know, six events at people's homes. And so what I've talked a lot about is, you know, smart development. There is a lot that's going to go on in Westwood, a lot going on. So we need to ensure that it's a holistic view. Islington, for example, the town hall, the offices that are providing property, right? So we need to ensure that we have that conversation. Number two, we have, we live in a great town. You know, the word of leave is in use today. I think we're all agree. Takes a lot of money, but there's a balance, right? So some of my neighbors who have raised their children here and have been here for generations, the property tax increases are hurting them. So this is a balance. I think that, you know, in any community, you want to ensure there's a diversity of residents, including people who want to stay in their homes for a long time. So it's finding that balance and ensuring that property taxes are kept at a level that allows us to run a good government, but allows us to protect those homeowners. And thirdly, my mantra, my biggest personal piece, has been around engagement. As I mentioned, a part of the subcommittee of the Sheen PTA, you know, I was not a great athlete growing up all the way, but I coached a lot of sports teams. Part of it was because we couldn't get other people to do it, right? So it's, as was mentioned earlier, people, you know, don't know about things, so they maybe don't sign up for things. I want to make sure that they're kind of through that. But more importantly, when we talk about running for a quorum at that town meeting, that's really sad. That's really sad. And during the course of running for office, you know, when I look at data and I look at who's voting, you'd be surprised who's voting, who's not. So how do we get those people back in the process? I think that's so critical. I've been to a number of school meetings. In the schools on the drive, I have the manager of the town. There are months where I'm the first in the end. You know, I get that everybody's busy, but I want somebody to reach out to small people and say, "Come with me." I sometimes feel like having inside information as I go to the school committee, because they're public meetings, right? I told them a fascinating story. I sat through a deep dive review of the MCAS analysis one night. It was fascinating. I think I was the only one there, right? So to me, civic engagement is a metric of a healthy community and will help resolve other issues and that's a big piece for me.
Mr. Glass.
I think I said that I really want to let people know when there's certain projects coming, whether they be public or private, that it's going to affect a community and I want to have all transparency as far as that goes. I think that's really my major goal as a selectman.
Yep.
In tying in with my question to the school committee and also Claire's question to the planning board, do you think that climate change is a serious problem and how do you think the town should address it?
Well, I do think climate change is a serious issue. I'm not a scientist, but I agree with most recognized scientists. We'll tell you that there is something happening, right? It's April 3rd and it's 26th, I'm just a spell checker. So I'm agreeing with them. I think a lot of it is around development and how you develop and smart development and ensuring that, you know, water runoff is a great example. So when I was at the MWI, it was always a big topic of discussion, knowing and treating rainwater, right? So it's smart development to ensure that we're returning rainwater back to the ground. If we're talking about building new buildings in town, how we're doing it in the most ego-friendly way, right? So I do recognize that climate change is real and I do believe that any building redo going forward or any development redo, we need to make sure that we are, we're on those lines.
Yeah, I believe climate changes are real and I believe that we need to address water runoff in this case, or whether it be in the wetlands or whatever. And I'm not an expert in that sort of, but I would entertain the, and if it came to the town, it would help relieve us from the type of entry to the environment of Westwood.
Questions? Well, lady, sorry to have to turn. Let's go to this gentleman who's sworn first. I'll come back to her. Was there someone, I'm sorry, was there someone over here who had a question?
There's someone else already asked, thank you.
Oh, all right. So let's go to this gentleman again, who's got a second question, then to the lady.
Yeah, here's a question I wanted to ask. Specifically, like what would you do? What are your ideas about serving the people, you know, speaking up for the people and communicating with the people about things that are going on in town?
Would you repeat the questions, please, moderator? Actually, you certainly could repeat yourself, just as loud as possible.
Yeah. What, what do these men do to serve the people, to speak up for the people and, you know, on a personal level? What are your specific ideas that you can take in, you know, communicating with these people in Westwood?
Oh, as I said before, I think, I'm in first to have transparent government. And what I think about that is, if there's a project coming in to your, it would particularly public or private, it would affect the integrity of the community or the character of Westwood. I think the people that, at least in that area, need to know way ahead of time, you could do that. This is one way. Phone calls and also maybe flyers or a knock on the door is another way. People need to know and they need to know about things that are going on.
Yeah, so I mean, as I mentioned before, I want to make sure that as a town, you know, we're keeping up with the electronic media, right? So much is changing so quickly in how we communicate, how our children communicate, how our parents communicate. There's a lot of information about the town always available. You can't necessarily rely on people to go find it, so we need to make sure we get it into it. Right now, for me, what I try to explain to people is really the structure of the town is that we have an open town meeting. The open town meeting is all of us, right? It's not so much open like offices. And when those warrants are set out in the spring and in the fall, that, to me, is the kickoff of the season. And we need to assess what we can, try to get people to invest a little bit of time and research those and understand those, because that's what makes the impact of the town, how we spend our money, how we move forward. So, you know, I want to work towards ensuring that people know this stuff is out there. As I've gone around to these various forums running for office, people have been so surprised when I tell them what's online or what's in those thick books they get twice a year. So I think it's just more advocacy in telling people what's out there and what you can get and enticing when it comes to meetings.
Okay, lady.
Mr. Delay, since the selectmen set the rate of the tax burden between commercial and residential, I'd be curious as to your thoughts on where that rate currently is.
and residential, I'd be curious as to your thoughts on where that rate currently is? If you like it where it is? If you would change it? Do you think it fosters better development in the town or if it favors residential community? What are your thoughts on this matter? Because it is a great burden for the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I believe right now it's fifteen dollars.
No, the balance between.
Oh, the balance between the two? I think commercial, we have more commercial.
No, no, no. What's the percentages between the two?
You mean you want to know the fifteen, the twenty-eight percent? Am I not, am I not age group? Okay. I'm not kidding with that.
The allocation between commercial tax revenues and residential tax.
I don't know the exact number offhand.
You don't know that? Okay.
So the tax, we collect about twenty-five percent of our taxes from a commercial base, which is, but we don't have twenty-five percent of the real estate owned by the properties.
The burden between it, the selectmen set it, so, okay.
Right, so, yeah, I'm not sure I'm getting it. I'm sorry.
Okay, that is the last question because we need to have time for a one-minute statement from each of you. So again, I'll start.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming and I would like to ask you for your support and your vote on April twenty-sixth and thank you.
Thank you all for coming this afternoon. You all being here today is an example of what makes Westwood great, which is involving so many people. During my years of leading Westwood, attending school committee meetings or finance commission meetings or long-term financial committee meetings, what is so impressive is the quality of people we have on our boards and the amount of work they put into that. And I want to service them here with those people. I have tried very hard in my time in Westwood, nine years, to make sure that Westwood remains a great community as a town. I really don't believe it's about me, it's several, or just my children. But I want to ensure that my children grow up in this town, they can pass it on to generations after them, the same great experience. My children are all born in this town. They wear the sports teams of this town and they're all very proud to talk about the schools that they attend. And I think that for my wife and I, that means a great deal. We believe in public service and committing as much as we can to the town. And I'd like to continue that by serving them here.